You ready?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Rackliff City Council meeting, special called meeting for November 12th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. If you'll please rise as Councilman Palmer gives our invocation, remain standing for our pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we're grateful for this day, a day that you have made, allowed us to be a part of it. We ask that you bless the council, bless our council, that he will give us wisdom and insight. Bless the council members, that they may use wisdom and insight as we join with the mayor to make the best decisions for the citizens of Rackliff. We ask your blessings upon those who in harm's way, fighting for freedom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Baker, present.
Deroche, here.
Palmer, here.
Seabrooks, here.
Thompson, here.
Yates, here.
We have a form. We have consideration of minutes for, consideration of approval for minutes for October 15th, 2019, regular meeting.
So move.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, I know we won't be long, but we have a closed session tonight. It won't take just a few minutes, it's a couple of updates we need to go over, so please don't leave. Don't leave. Stay here. So Evan, we have a motion to-
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session per KRS 61.810, 1B acquisitions, sale of land, and see litigation.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session, we should be back here in just a few minutes.
Okay, we'll do it, sir. Do you want a water?
No.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, you buy my spike, I'm so sorry. I have this little machine in front of me and my little legs can't walk that much.
See you guys in a little bit.
Into order the called, special called council meeting, if we can have a motion to go back into our meeting.
So move.
Second, motion the second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries. Let it be known that no official action was taken during the closed session. All right, at this time, I have a motion to adjourn out of our special called meeting.
So move.
Second, motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we are in our work session, so that's how easy it transitions, real fast. So, at this time, I'd like to bring up our chief of police, Jeff Cross, if you'll come in, and we're going to talk a little police updates.
No need for an ovation.
Yes, please y'all don't stand up at one time, yeah.
Hi, Chief.
How are y'all?
Good.
So Chief Cross is-
Y'all took my chair away.
Yeah, you're going to have to stand at podium now. Chief Cross is going to talk to us, give us some updates on the police department, and then Jeff and I've got some information to share, so Chief, if you want to-
Bless you. Bless you. Just to give you a little update on our budget, our budget, almost the end of the year, but everything's on track. Our spending is a little bit below, you know, trying to keep it below and get what we need as we go along, so we don't get behind it, stay ahead of the change, so to speak, as they say in football. We sold, just to give you an update, remember I talked to y'all back a while back about purchasing new weapons this year, ours was 13 years old. We're right in the middle of that process, and the JAG grant and the sale of those two SUVs or ATVs that we had, we sold them and got about $15,000 between the two of them. So it's helped us complete this project without using any budget money, spending money on the budget.
Awesome.
We also have a traffic grant that just got renewed again, and it starts in, you know, October every year, and goes through September, so we've renewed that, we're making good use of that once again, as we always do. Our manpower right now, we recently lost an officer to Bullock County, one that came to us from Bardstown back in February, he didn't stay too long, he went to Bullock County. We have a five-year officer that's leaving on the 16th to go to Hillview Police Department, and we got one that retired at the end of this past month.
Those sound like, those are just preference, not necessarily financial.
Well, both, the Bullock County, the officer there, he was interested in being assigned to a drug unit, which, I mean, we didn't have that available to us at this time, because we have someone there that hadn't been down there too long. The other one, it is, you know, more pay, got quite, pretty good raise to go. And then Officer Vance, he retired after 23 years. We have two in the academy.
Let me just mention something. I had the opportunity to speak to a, an individual that works in a small town up in Prospect? Anchorage?
Anchorage.
And so I started talking about how some of these officers can make more money being in these smaller departments, and I, what was interesting, I found out, a lot of these smaller agencies that have mayor council don't have paid fire departments, public works, paid mayor, paid council, so a lot of their tax base is dedicated solely just to-
Like Vine Grove.
Most to a certain extent, yeah, but these are a little bit set up a lot different, and so a lot of their tax base goes directly to the department, because they share services with fire through Jefferson County, they have mutual aid agreements, they do public works different ways, and so sometimes it's hard, and Chief and I've talked about this several times, you know, it's, our officer starting off makes this, their officer start off making $50,000, $60,000, you just can't compete against that, and so we have no problem with an officer wanting the better themselves, it's just we hate to lose good officers, so, yeah. Yeah, to your point.
But we have two, two officers in the academy currently, they've been in about, about three weeks now, I think. And with, with those three gone, and them two in the academy, that actually leaves five slots on the street that, that is vacant right now, and we're getting ready to hire again, so we'll try to get those slots filled as soon as we can.
So, you mean, we are still looking for three, since two?
Three, yes, three, but we have two in the academy, so that leaves us, you know, five short on the street every day. Dispatchers, we currently have two positions there, we're almost through the hiring process there, getting ready to hire two dispatchers. We did a detail on the south end of town, where sometime, from time to time, we'll have hotspots throughout the city here or there. What we do, when we have those things, we'll, we'll assign a detail there and put some pressure on, and traffic, run some traffic, and try to make contact and serve warrants. We did that from October 3rd through the 12th for 10 days. We made 15 arrests and issued 33 citations for multiple violations. So that was a pretty successful, you know, area of cleanup we tried to work on.
Yeah, so Chief, if you remember, we had a, a issue behind the, I can still call it the old Sears building, up there off Centennial and Wagon Wheel, so the chief and I sat down and kind of went over a plan of how we would attack some of these areas where the high crime associated with, and so I want to commend the guys, because they, I think, I even got a couple of calls wondering what was going on up there, and why there were so many officers in that area, but from what I understand, it's kind of taken it off.
Calmed down quite a bit.
Yeah, so, every once in a while, you have to do that.
Sure, sure. Any questions about anything? Just a little update on what we got going on.
Are you in the hiring process for the three vacant slots?
We're getting ready to, we're taking applications right now, we're going to advertise so we can get some more applications in, so if y'all know of anybody, anybody out there watching, we're hiring, come apply.
Have we had a slowdown in the graffiti tag in the businesses?
Yes, we did have a slowdown, and then we have another little flare up here recently that moved from buildings to signs, and we've been working pretty hard on trying to, we did make one arrest a while back, and, but obviously, it wasn't the same person doing it all, but we're still working on that.
And Chief, I wanted to talk a little bit, unfortunately, about an issue that happened this past weekend, you and I, of course, spoke about just before the meeting again. As you all probably are aware, we had a issue in a parking lot this weekend over here at a business located just within sight here of City Hall, and so, you know, that's, it's very concerning to us as a body and to the community, when we have issues like that that happen, and so, do you want to share a little, little bit? I know it's still under investigation, so we can't go into too much details, but-
Yeah, I don't want to talk a whole lot about that, we are investigating it, and we'll see where that leads us, but, you know, we got a great community, I think we do, and are we immune to crime that occurs around our country? No, we're not immune to it, every community has issues that occur. I'm proud of the response that our police department gives, and our guys that work, and gals that work hard every day and get out there and get with it, and when we do have these incidents, I'm proud of our solve rate.
I think one of the things-
I'll say this, though, we, I think we got a lot of good people in this community, and it seems like the three, our last three major incidents that we've had, have been people coming into our community from other places, and airing out their differences, and it just so, just so it happens here in Rackliff, it could have happened in some other town, it could have happened, I know this incident took place over here at this, this one business, but it could have happened at another business. And another thing I'll say about that, these weren't just some people coming in and doing a random shooting in a Walmart, or a Kroger's, or a, these were associates that had issues, and they decided to take care of business here in our community, and that's sad, and it hurts us, we don't like it, and we're going to deal with it, but, you know, it's, it's society, I mean, it seemed like nobody, nobody puts up their dukes anymore, they pull out guns.
Chief, I have a question for you. Can you tell us what time of the day this occurred?
It was 11:30, about 11:30, Saturday night, yes.
So, how many other gathering spots do we have in the city, known gathering spots operating at that time of night? Do you have any idea of other spots around the city in business that gather large groups of people?
Applebee's, not to that extent.
Well, this, this, what happened over here is, they had a celebration for, I think, some rapper had a release, a CD release or something, so the owners rented the place out for them to celebrate that. You know, I guess some of our alcohol servers are open till what, midnight, or one, so, you know, it could be, I don't know how many we got operating now, ask what you think, just one now, so outside of Applebee's, I don't, I guess it's the only one at that time of night.
So that's the only place on a Saturday night that were out, large groups of people, yeah, okay, good.
The, you know, when the chief and I were talking, we were, each other, just last week, and why the scenarios are different, Kroger's, there was a guy inside a Kroger shooting, there's a lady that got upset because her order was wrong at KFC, and drove around the building and shot through the, the drive-thru, not here, other states.
On the news, from the news.
On the news, I mean, we got schools that do more active shooter drills now than tornado drills, I mean, I think we all remember when we were in fire drills and tornado drills, so it's just a completely different world than it used to be.
You got people getting shot at church.
Yeah.
Society's changed.
You know, we've had a- I think the reason, the reason I ask my question is, I think that, from a reactive standpoint, that, you know, it makes it a little bit easier to know that at 11:30 on a Saturday night, we really have this one gathering place to really focus or make our presence known, as opposed to having several of them not being at the right, for policing, not being at the right place at the right time.
Sure.
It's a little bit difficult when you've got several spots around town, that violence could erupt at any moment, especially when we have alcohol involved, so if we only have one spot, now that this has been brought to our community, I'd be very easy to kind of make our presence known, and-
Yeah, and so that you know, though, that we, we have in the past, you know, the guys do log in extra patrols through that parking lot during the night, of course, I mean, you don't go over and just sit there the whole time, you know, they got other calls that they go to, but, but we have paid some attention to, to the facility, as we have others. You know, I always hate to say that, that, you know, it's like a hotspot that flares up, like we were talking about the neighborhood, when that occurs, we start to, I won't say pressure, but we, we give a high presence, we, we kind of move in and let them know we're here. This instance over here, I mean, they're 300 yards from our front parking lot, well, we got eight or nine cruisers lined up across the back row over here. Did they know that? I don't know, they may have, and they didn't care, I don't know, but we're investigating this thing, and it's hard, it makes it hard when you don't get a whole lot of cooperation, but we, we're not going to stop until we make some progress.
I'm not for sure if we can or not, but I think as a council, that we might want to look into attaching, if you have a bar license, require you to have an off-duty police officer on duty. I know Lost Margaritas, when they was in business, caused us a whole lot of problems, I know they had security there, but they had, they had a lot of problems, and one of the, we had an incident that carried over to Shelby Street, where it ended up in a murder, and we've had a couple of serious incidents over here now. I don't think it would hurt to attach that to, if you're going to have a full-blown liquor license, that you have some type of security, if we can do that.
Well, so that you know, this, the, the owner of the establishment, I went and paid him a visit today, and he asked if he could hire off-duty officers over there for his events, and of course, I told him it would have to be outside before they would be allowed to, you know, they couldn't work inside, they had to work outside. But if you're outside, but I'll say this, even at Lost Margaritas, when we had cops down there in uniform with the cruiser, stuff still broke out inside that place that carried outside, and sometimes it was overwhelming, and we had to have KSP come in in Elizabethtown and provide assistance, because there were so many people there, and we got, you know, somebody down there off-duty, and maybe three or four or five other police officers with, you know, 200 people, so it'd get really, really scary. We had a couple of guys that got some minor injuries, but it doesn't guarantee that something won't happen.
Right, but what's the reason we can't have somebody inside?
Well, it goes back to policy. We don't want to promote our guys working as police officers inside an establishment where they're selling alcohol. I think Elizabethtown, I think their policy is, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure, if I remember right, that if it's not a city-functioned alcohol event, they don't allow their officers to work off-duty at a place that serves alcohol, period, inside or outside, I'm pretty sure that's how that is. But it's a policy that, that goes back to the Farley era, that we didn't want our officers working inside a facility that's selling alcohol.
And back at that point, we weren't really having any place to sell alcohol.
Right, right, right.
Now, they can go in if something's needed.
If, yes, if something breaks out inside, if something they would call the police for, yes, we can go in, and we got a quicker response time, because they're there off-duty.
But you got to, some of it's up to the management, controlling their crowd-
Sure it is, and-
What's going on in there, so-
Yes, and it's like I told Mr. Robinson today, you got security in here, of course, they're, they're not armed security, but they got to have security in there, bouncers, whatever you want to call them, and I, you know, he needs to post signs, no weapons, he needs to have a wand there, he's got people, he says he's got someone that searches them outside, but I asked him if they had a wand, he said he don't have no wands, but, you know, he said he was going to purchase some wands, but, you know, we, we try to work together with them, and as a community, we're all in this together.
Chief, do we know how much of, I know, I just heard my colleague refer to some of the incidents of Lost Margaritas, and now we've had a couple over here. Do we know how much of these spikes are related to alcohol sales?
That I couldn't answer, I mean, Applebee's sells alcohol, we don't go up there a whole lot. There's been other venues that have been open, and they didn't have the problems that, it seems like with Lost Margaritas, when, when they would have these rap battles and things like that, that they advertised, or what they call them, pajama parties and different things, and, and they, they, they no longer had the everyday crowd that was coming from Rackliff, you know, the guys over a couple streets over are going to have a good time and have a few beers, you're drawing crowds from, that advertisement, that they're looking for huge crowds, and they're drawing them from other places. It seems like that's what's causing it, you know.
Right, so the reason I ask is that, I think we, we need to be data-informed and data-driven, in whatever response, as a legislative body, we have, and if we can tie these spikes in crime to our alcohol sales ordinance, because, you know, I, I've tried to be responsible when that ordinance is drafted-
Right.
Around dates and times, right?
Right.
And now, we starting to see a spike, and it's associated with alcohol sales, and these crazy theme parties that happen, that draw people from other communities.
Right.
You know, if the data suggests that that is a variable that contributes, then we need to go back to our alcohol sales ordinance, and look at making sure that ordinance restricts some of these types of scenarios that facilitate these, these spikes in behavior. We can't have it both ways.
I would agree.
So, we either want to be a party town, and draw the crowds, and deal with what comes with it-
Right.
Or we want to be Mayberry, and be responsible, and say, we're okay with drinking, but you're going to be responsible, and if that means that cuts us out of the crazy parties, then it cuts us out of the crazy parties, but we can have it both ways.
Right.
So, so we need to look at data, and we need to make sure data informs the legislative response, and understand that that may come with some consequences politically, but the reality is, if alcohol, violence, has a correlation, right, and we can clearly draw that through data, then it's incumbent upon us to make that tough decision, decide what's best for our community, and it's not going to be a one-size-fit-all, some folks are going to-
That's right.
Benefit from it, some folks are going to be hurt from it, but, you know, I was at Big O's getting tires the other day, and Ray showed me a bullet that hit his house from that shot, right? So, you know, we can't have it both ways, right? So I think that we need to have a conversation that's informed by data, and then we need to decide what's the best and safest ordinance for Rackliff.
Sure. Now, for the record, I like Mayberry, and you don't have to wear a gun, so I'm, I'm all for that.
And Barney only had one bullet.
I wanted to clarify something, Chief, if I could, so if I understand correctly, you were just saying it was a shooting, but you did not indicate that, at this point in the investigation, that the alcohol is what stirred it.
I, I can't say that the alcohol stirred it, it, it happened at an establishment that serves alcohol.
Right.
Was the alcohol a contributor in this particular incident? I would, I can't tell you that at this time, because we are-
Because when you mentioned to me that there-
It's still under investigation.
Yeah, because you're in investigation, but you're also telling me that there was a, a specific theme party, age demographics, there's a couple of different scenarios that play into that, and the reason why I'm bringing that up is because, yes, I do believe that we need to be responsible with any ordinance that we set, the other conversation that we have is that we do have professionals, when they're always complaining about, they don't want to have to go to Louisville for everything, so I do believe with the, with the data, we can see, was the alcohol the major, you know, component? If we can keep people, our taxpayers are still here, whether they drink or not, you know, that's, that's neither here nor there, but maybe something like a rap battle maybe need to be streamlined to a different type of atmosphere, age demographic, because they may not be able to handle their emotions, sometimes with any type of battles, they start to talk about each other, somebody's feelings get hurt. So, it's, it's one of those things, that you might want to look at demographics, age, because I did see, I noticed that with the establishment, they even changed the age now, because they see that that played a part into who comes in and out, so that's why I'm interested in the data as well, before we do a knee-jerk on alcohol only.
But I don't think you can tell somebody, you're allowed to have this type of party, and you're not allowed to have that type of theme party.
Well, he's the owner, he can have any kind of party he wants, but-
Right.
You're talking about, maybe he won't have any more rap battles going forward, because of what it brought, you know, outside people coming in doing whatever, he may not want to have a Scorpio party, pajama jammy jam, or something of that nature, but I'm just trying to make sure that we're not alienating people from being able to enjoy whatever they want to in a situation like that, but still have a responsible legislation, you know, put around that, and not just, you know, isolate it out. That was my point.
Yeah, it just sounds, it just sounds like to me that alcohol's establishment and alcohol sales is a common thread. So, I'm not saying it's the only contributing mechanism, I'm just saying, when you start looking at doing a variable analysis of things, you realize that there are certain variables that continue to pop up in your analysis, and if alcohol sales seem to be associated with the violence on the south end with Lost Margaritas and alcohol sales, right, not that in each case, there was necessarily the shooter was drunk or intoxicated, but the environment, that's a variable that continues to be assist, consistent.
Nightclub.
So my whole point is, is are we allowing for certain environments to be created that facilitates, you know, this, this collage of variables that cause this to happen? So it may not be that in every case, alcohol was a motivator on these individuals, but is alcohol a factor in the environment that's common to these hotspots that pop up? If it is, then yes, people gather to drink, and, and as a result of drinking and partying and certain other insightful activities, there's this propensity for violence to break out, and so we may not be able to control all human behaviors and human instincts, but if we know that our ordinance facilitates certain environmental factors, then we can control those environmental factors, how we legislate, right? And so that's all I'm asking, is if, if we see a common thread tied to these after midnight and alcohol sales establishment, then that's something we can do something about, right? So, yeah, so I think, I think we really need to look at data from all angles, and kind of collect that, but, but as you said, that there was a specific event that drew people from another community into our community, and violence erupted, right? So that event-
It appears so.
Right.
We're still looking.
So, and then we've also anodally, without data, kind of come to the same type of anecdotal analysis of some of the Lost Margaritas stuff, and so my point is, and I do, you know, qualify this by saying, anodally, we have come to those conclusions, now we just need to think about how do we collect data to either confirm or deny, so that this body can make an informed decision.
Barbara, before I move on to the next comment, do you want to make your statement about nothing happens?
I always, I always tell my children, nothing good happens after midnight, you best be home.
Thank you, Barbara. All right. So, real quick, Ed, you mentioned some data numbers, I want to read, because I think all of us have probably received a question about how Rackliff ranks on crime statistics versus E-Town or Rackliff or Vine Grove kind of thing, and so, I just want to read these, these two. The 2018 Rackliff crime rate rose by 10% in comparison to 2017, so I don't have 19 numbers yet.
From 18 to 17?
18 to 17, rose by 10%.
Well, 10.
Yep, and this is a comparison between our two largest cities here in Hardin County. The number of homicides stood at one, and Jeff, you have a, something on that, I think we talked about a minute ago, is that right? But the homicides stood at one and decreased by one compared to 2017, but Rackliff has seen an increase in the violent crime and property crime.
What's the total increase in that? Is that 10%?
Yeah. Yeah, it didn't, it just didn't say. It was, it was just overall, in that overall 10%. No, that's the Radcliffe and this is the crime data, uh, information. Now, the 20, or excuse me, the eight, yeah, 2018 crime rates in Elizabeth Town rose by 9% compared to the 2017. The homicides that year were three, which was an increase of two more compared to 2017. But, uh, Elizabeth Town saw, uh, has seen an increase in violent crime and a decrease in property crime. So those were the comparisons between the two.
Can you go back and restate the Radcliffe homicides were?
Homicide stood at one, a decrease of one compared to 2017. That's the way it reads. Elizabeth Town, uh, homicide stood at three, an increase of two compared to 2017. Now, I don't know what violent crime, property crime would be, break-ins.
Well, it's, we provide the data to them and it's, I don't know how they've broken that down. I'd have to check into that, but I would say if your violent crimes go down and it's listing property crimes, it could be because of burglaries or assaults, um, you know, some robberies. So all that's probably playing a factor into their 10%.
When we break that stuff out, do we break it out according to, you know, a lot of times crime happens within, um, acquaintances or relationships
Yes.
and as opposed to unrelated instances? Is all that broken down that way?
Yes, we, we, we can show, uh, if a crime seems to be more random. For instance, we're coming up on the holiday season, um, our armed robberies typically, in most all communities, you'll see them increase a little bit, uh, burglaries or thefts, things like that. People are trying to get money.
Domestic violence too, sometimes.
Um, you know, those are mostly random victim crimes, you know, that they go in to rob a business or, uh, break into someone's home, still they don't necessarily know them or target them for that. The things that, as far as the violence goes, and, and we seem to be, um, I hate to call it lucky, because, uh, most of our violent crimes are, are targeted because someone, they're, they're acquaintances of each other for some reason or another. It could simply be, it could be something simple, but it could some, be something bad because they're, they're non-drug dealers and they, uh, drug users and they, you know, that's the person they have their, their issues with. Um, you know, some of our obviously domestic violence cases, that explains itself, you know, those assaults and things. Those are known victim perpetrators. You know, I, I, I'm glad that we don't have a lot of random victims. You know, you, you see things that, mass shootings in, that we've seen across our country. This over here, all indications are that this is not someone that came in to shoot up the place and then shoot just as many as victims as they could. There, there's, seems to be, um,
Connection.
Connection or, uh, um, target. For lack of a better description. But we'll see how all that turns out.
Well, I want to
We didn't have any raw numbers that crime is up 10% to me relative to the volume, volume and magnitude. Do you have any raw numbers about what the volume and magnitude of crime looks like compared to the sister community?
No, I mean, ultimately, when we, when I pulled this, this, it just basically gave me the statistics between the two in that our violent crime, which Chief has just explained, when is equal with the property crime, where Elizabeth Town's violent crime and, uh, had a decrease in property crime.
Right. No, I just, I'm just saying it's only relevant if we know
What the
10%
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can provide the numbers
Yeah, that's the raw numbers
Yeah, I can, the numbers that we report to them.
10%.
Yeah, what the 10%.
Yeah, so I'd be interested in knowing what the volume or the magnitude of, of that looks like.
Obviously, one of the worst crimes that we deal with is, you, you know, homicide. For instance, um, going back to 2006, and the reason I go back to that is because our new world system, which is what houses our data now, uh, anything beyond that, I would have to handful paper copies of. But just going back to 2006, um, in 14 years, uh, we've had 16 homicides. Now, I've been here almost 27 years and even before I got here, I think that the, the average, that we have one's too many, but the average, uh, homicides for the year over the long haul has been about one per year. Now, sometimes we'll have two, the next year we might not have any, or we'll have three and, and just have one. But that data kind of tells you 16 in 14 years kind of supports.
And you know, I think, I think that, you know, we need to really celebrate that when you consider the amount of, um, military folks we have here who are suffering with military associated, um, mental health issues. And yet we don't have a whole lot of, of violence erupting around that population.
True.
So I think, I think that is definitely, I mean, we have, we have trained killers among us. In the Walmart, at the bank, I mean, people who made their living and have been traumatized as a result of that. And yet, you know, we're a relatively safe community. And when you think about other communities with, without the density of, of military, uh, personnel having much more violence than we experienced, that, that is a, a point of celebration. And I agree with you, one is too many, but when you take context into, uh, play, the fact that we have, I mean, talk to some of these folks out here, we have trained killers among us who defended freedom and were trained and highly resourced to do that. And yet to not have, you know, a lot of these, uh, type of incidents that some community are having around there, their mental health community, um, is, is phenomenal. Says a lot about how we treat one another and, and how we, um, interact with our veterans and
And support.
make them feel safe and, and create a safe environment.
I, I can say this, you know, I've been around here most all my life and, and been in, working with this agency in the city for, like I said, 27 years in this line of work. And the military has been great to us. I mean, we, we have really had a great relationship with the people that live in this community that, and, and you know, sometimes I'll go places and they'll ask me, Chief, you, y'all have a lot of problems? I guess you have a lot of problems with people in the military. I said, no, we don't have a lot of problems with people in the military. We, we've always had a great relationship and they, they're, they've been very respectful of us and we are of them. And it's worked really well. Uh, and that's why I say, you know, anybody that, that criticizes our community uh, as being a, a bad place or, you know, bad things happen, sure, bad things happen here, sometimes they do. But I'll take ours over any place, any day of the week.
Even though 16 homicides, it's somewhat, some of those are murder suicides, I know.
No, we don't.
No, that's, that's excluding all suicides.
No, murder, murder and then suicide.
Yeah.
So one of those homicides, some of those homicides are murder and then the guy killed himself, correct?
We wouldn't count, we wouldn't count the suicide
Yeah, suicide, right, right, yeah.
Yeah, but it could have had, it could have had an incident where that occurred.
Domestic violence, yeah, is what I'm saying. So it's not like
A random
It's, it's not a random act of violence, someone getting shot in, in
Domestic.
Yeah, nine times out of 10, again, like I said earlier about our, the, the, the perpetrator some way knows the victim.
Right.
Like, and you're right, what you're going there is, it's not just a random
Act of violence, yeah.
Act of violence against an innocent, you know, yeah, they, they could be an innocent victim, but they some way knew the perp.
I mean, it has to consist of a national trends as well. Most homicide victims, uh, were known by their, their perpetrators.
Well, I do want to, because I know, and I will tell you, and, um, Chief, you want to say anything before we close out? Um, just about all the homicides that we've had, at least since I've been around here the last few years, our detectives have, have solved or made arrests in.
Yes.
So that's, that's pretty good. And I think we're, that's, that's something to be
Yeah, like I said, well, I'm proud of our solve rate, and, and not just our homicides, but, you know, a lot of our crimes. I'm proud of our solve rate. The guys do, and gals do a great job. And, uh, you know, I, I think we got a great police department and we got a great community to live in and, and working.
We want to thank our fire department as well, our EMTs that show up, because I mean, they, they come running too. I mean, they don't
Absolutely.
Yep.
They normally stay back and say, hey, is everything clear?
Yeah, they usually wait till the police. Oh, no, I was actually, I almost, I had a little tear coming right there, Jamie. I mean, well, we do, we do appreciate it. I mean, Jamie, uh, well, Chief, of course I call you Jamie, but most chiefs call me within, I don't know, 30, 40 minutes of the, the situation. And so, um, everybody's on scene and so, like I said, you guys, EMS, fire department, everybody. So we appreciate those first responders.
And I'll say something about some other agencies, KSP, Vine Grove, uh, Sheriff's Department, everybody was here. I mean, they were all here helping out and, um, it was just a great team.
Yep. Well, all right, Jeffrey, I know you got to get home. Before you do, let me, this is today's Chief Cross's birthday. They got you something special. It was, it's, uh, oh, yeah. I will tell you, it's from a gathering bakery.
Our local owned bakery.
Locally owned bakery. I didn't get you the pink because I love you. I got you the pink because that's the only damn one they had left.
It's a thought that counts.
Yeah, so come on up here. So we're all going to sing happy birthday to you, Jeffrey. So, all right, hold your candle.
Now, as JJ announced today at
R-S-B-A.
R-S-B-A, I'm not 68 years old. But I told him if I was, I was in great shape.
You were in great shape.
All right, Jeffrey, back up. Don't get so close. Let me get a picture of you holding that candle.
Stop it, Jamie.
One, two, three. All right, I got you. All right.
You better hurry and make your wish.
Happy birthday to you.
How bad do you feel?
Happy birthday, dear Jeffrey. Happy birthday to you.
There you go, Jeffrey.
How old are you?
You got to make a wish.
Are you 56 now?
There you go.
He's old.
You're good, Chief. You're 56.
I got your wife one.
Oh, thank you.
I got the kids some cookies, so take him home.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you all so much.
You're welcome.
All right.
Good night, Chief.
You should have got the extingu, hey, Jamie, you should have been up here with that extinguisher. All right. Well, next we have our board appointments. I gave you guys a list. Two of the people, um, that I have recommended are on, that are here tonight. Uh, you all should have got a piece of paper. Um, unfortunately, one of our great community partners and individuals, Michelle Tucker, ended up moving back to her home state and left us, uh, with a vacancy on the code enforcement board. So, um, I have recommended Ms. Tara Wash. If you want to raise your hand, there's Tara. Uh, Tara has been in our community since 2011. Um, she, um, actually went through a code enforcement issue herself for, for several years and kind of understands what it's like to live next to an area, um, that's not well maintained and taken care of. And so I thought she would be a perfect fit to, uh, sit on the code enforcement board. Uh, she wants to be more a part of the community. Uh, she wants to work to help clean and, and streamline some of those things that she had to endure and, 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 and face. And so, uh, I'd like to recommend her. Of course, there's no voting tonight. This is just the recommendations. Um, I'd like to recommend her for our code enforcement board. I'd also like to move an alternate up, uh, which is Jack Holland. Uh, Jack has, of course, served our community. He lives here. Uh, Jack has been an alternate on the board for several years. So he said he would like to, uh, fill that position. And then I'd like to, I've interviewed Mr. Delmar Thomas. Uh, he's a member of, uh, New Hope Church. Uh, he said that he would like, he lives over behind, I call it the Old Sears, but, um, he lives over there and would like to be an alternate, uh, to sit on the board, uh, as well. And then I'm sure many of you all know that, uh, Mary Dunn, who served on a board of adjustments for many years, um, has resigned and she has, uh, so that left a vacancy. And I know many of y'all know Ms. Bonnie Lynn Scott, who is here.
Yes.
And, uh, Bonnie
Don't tell him.
I won't tell him, but Bonnie has, you know, her, uh, she, they attend most meetings. The whole, the ladies that sit right there, they try to make those meetings. And, uh, Ms. Lynn Scott, on several occasions, asked me if there's any opportunity for her to participate or be a part of this. She'd like to. So I thought it'd be a great fit for her to sit on the board of adjustments. And finally, uh, Jennifer Johnson has left our planning commission meeting, our planning commission, and, uh, she is moving to California. So we wish her the best on all the fires that are going out there and
There's a house left.
But, uh, Michael Worthington, who lives over in the Meadow Lake area, uh, has lived in our community for many years. Uh, he would like an opportunity to participate and serve. Uh, he has also been, he is, how long has he been with the volunteer? He's getting ready to
Oh, my goodness.
How long? He's been a volunteer firefighter with us for 22 years. And so he is, uh, going to be coming off the fire department and retire. He also works for Nelson Eastland Bennett Funeral Home as a, I don't, I don't call them mortician, is it a, an undertaker? There you go. And he's been a part of our community for several years and he would like to have an opportunity to help us shape our community. So those are the ones I'd like to recommend. If you have any questions or anything like that you want to ask me through the week, more welcome just to call or hit me up or let me know.
Well, nice touch on some new names. I love that.
I got some new names on there.
New names. I like new.
Took me a little bit, but I found some.
Got a few recycled, but we, we, we're working, baby steps. We're working.
So I got, yes, sir.
Does everyone live in Radcliffe?
Yes, they all have to.
Yes, sir.
Um, then next on this schedule is the, uh, 2020 holiday schedule. I didn't know if there's anything on there that you guys saw was, same thing we had before. I don't think there's anything added.
Looks good. I checked and verified all the days. We're good.
Your birthday needs to be on there.
I would like to put birthdays on there. Would you go with that, Ed? Because I will.
Barbara hasn't seen a holiday, she won't vote for it.
Barbara, I'd vote for that.
I think they should have a birthday off.
I'd give, I'd give
One day during their month.
Yep.
Birthday month, if we can convince enough people to vote for that.
Give them, that's three. Hanya Severs, wouldn't you like to see our employees?
Well, this is my birthday month, so I'm still celebrating.
No, I'm saying, wouldn't you mind giving, uh, our employees a day off on their birthday?
I think that's a good idea.
There you go.
Oh, there we go.
There's four of us.
Pam? I know Ed said no.
I mean, he, he
Stop.
Councilman Palmer.
No, I'm not.
I do think that's a good, I know when I worked at the finance company, we had that and it is a good little incentive. And it, um, the employees can get some things done when they normally can't and operations still are the same.
Well, I think you should make that motion Tuesday, Barbara. I do believe you might have support.
Well, that would be wonderful.
I just had a gray hair飘 out of my head, Barbara. Another one.
Yeah, another one. Now, of course, if we have several police officers and firefighters on the same birthday, we might have to tweak.
It's one day during that month.
Yeah, okay.
So it spreads out.
One day during the month.
And if you quit before the end of the month, you don't get paid for that day when you get your last check.
Isn't that just an extra day of vacation?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll give them a floating, a floating
Give them a floating day.
A floating vacation day.
Floating vacation day.
It's a what vacation?
A floating vacation day.
They have those
Everybody birthday one.
They have like these, um, little hefty little things, um, employee
That's fine.
And they have with HR managers and they put them all together and they got a floating day.
I think that'd be a good little perk. We might not be able to give them everything, but we can give them that.
We can give them that.
Vacation day and they'll call it a floating day. And they can take it through, well, with a floating, they can take it anytime throughout their years.
Correct.
It's 132 days off, 134 days.
But it's a little at a time. It's all right.
I can already hear, I'm already running the numbers in my head right now.
It's either that or give them a 6% raise. I'll give them the day.
I wouldn't have led with that, Barbara, just yet.
Yeah, I just, just
Wouldn't have led with that.
We was doing great and had them all happy and now
I wouldn't have led with that. I just
Well, at the end of the day, it's up to y'all what y'all want to do. I'll just, I'm just happy to be here.
I like the floating day.
I like the floating day too. I think it's a great idea. A little bit of morale booster.
Right. Way to start a new year. Now, this calendar is great too, though, next year.
I'm just listening. Are y'all being, if y'all being serious, we need to vote because I need to change the
We are serious. I am. We are serious, I am serious.
Michael floating day.
Just waiting on y'all.
Y'all good?
Two D word.
So if y'all say put it on the agenda.
Put it on the.
All right, right at the bottom, y'all vote on.
Oh, I had it as soon as Barbara mentioned. I'm all for that.
Then wait, we, we did put one stipulation, administrative officer.
I think it should be something that we should empower the chief executive to do and not necessarily make it an ordinance that way, depending on the needs of the chief executive, that policy can be regulated up and down, my personal. So I think we empower the mayor to, to do that, leave it to his discretion to do it or not.
So you had added into the employee handbook, up to the mayor's discretion?
Right. I would empower the chief executive officer to do what he or she wills with his workforce and not necessarily mandate from this body.
If you all set the holiday schedule.
But they're saying, don't make it a holiday, they're, make it a.
Floating day.
A floating day.
A floating day, like your normal vacation days.
I'm just looking at that wall of chiefs over there and I'm wondering which one's gonna be the one that cuts it, when they got up, you know what I mean? Like somebody comes in after me and then says, well, it's.
Well, then that's on them.
Well, it is on them, I mean, you just always have to look at ways to, and if you talk about this and work for some time.
Say the council does and it'll take a council overtime.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, I just don't.
Yeah, put a, put a floating holiday in there.
If you put it in there, you can just put your, your parameters of how you wanna set it up, if that's what you wanna do.
Are you talking about floating?
Yeah.
Throughout the year, just anytime they wanna take it?
Yeah, an extra vacation day for whatever they desire to use.
Okay, so it's just an extra vacation day, that's all we're talking about.
Yep.
One more day sick leave.
Not sick leave, sick leave if you have to be sick.
Do you, Barbara?
I got a mental health day, I need a mental health day.
We're taking those now, mental health days.
So it really has nothing to do with birthdays?
Well, it started that way.
It has zero to do with birthdays.
That's why I was still trying to figure it out.
Where we're arriving is, it's just an extra vacation day. So we're changing the vacation policy to add an extra day, so certain people can feel good about themselves.
Or have a mental, like a mental health day.
Sorry, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but.
It's actually an incentive, just, just a small incentive.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm saying, basically using the same words, we're talking about changing policy, and that's, again, empowering the chief executive to write policy to that effect. We're talking about involving this body, we're talking about changing, you know, ordinance or writing it into some legislative.
I gotta look at the policy to see whether or not.
Well, check it out, we gotta wait.
I'm all about empowering the chief executive officer to do that.
Hours are for holiday pay.
We've got a.
Not holiday pay, um.
We've got a week.
Yeah, your leave.
I just gotta check what the policy is. Cause the policy changes, it takes an act of the council.
Right. But the holiday schedule takes an act of the council too, so still us.
Ooh.
Well, that went.
Thank you, Barbara.
Interesting.
That head, she fell and hit her head today, I think it.
I did hit my head, I really did.
All right. I think that's it. So we'll check that, I'll bring it back to y'all, we email y'all with that answer, whatever Chance says in the morning. All right, so at this time, Mayor Council comments, I think Chris went first last time, Barbara, you got anything?
I have several things, I do, it's a whole list, Councilman Palmer, I hate to, because.
You're just like I am, Palmer's like.
Well, they're, they're city-related, except for this first one. It is, I talked to, had the pleasure of sitting next to Gene Gudenkauf today at the RSBA luncheon and he has the flyer here for the AUSA, for their membership meeting, their Fall General Membership Meeting and Awards Program is Monday, the nineteenth. Tickets in advance are fifteen dollars. If you get hold of Kendra Stewart Scott or Mr. Gudenkauf, you can get those, it will be held at the Sabre Quill. The other items are all for the City of Radcliffe. On November the sixteenth, we're having the Fall Festival Craft Show, that's at Calvin Community Center from eleven to four. And then on November the eighteenth, nineteenth through the twenty-second, from nine to five, you can set up your Christmas trees for the Festival of Trees at Calvin Community Center. And that's always a, a big thing, we get so many businesses and community support with that and clubs and organizations and everybody really enjoys that, so we wanna get even more trees this year than we've had before. Radcliffe is having the Second Annual House Decorating Contest. It has several divisions here, I will give a copy of these to Facebook so he can take the picture in that, that we have.
They're already on there. You put it on there early.
Right, we have Inflatables, the Griswolds, which is everything, and Norman Rockwell. So if you wanna decorate your house for that, you can get started early. The judges will analyze their entries between December ninth and the thirteenth, so you might want to start on that early. And then December the sixth is honorary Santa Claus down Holiday Lane, it's the light-up of, of the Christmas tree festival. And that, I don't have a time, but it will be at six o'clock. And that's right here in front of the community center. And then the next day, on the seventh, is Breakfast with Santa and that's another art and craft fair with Mrs. Claus. And that begins from eight to four. And the pancake breakfast and a lot of crafts. And then the last thing we have is December the thirteenth, from six to nine, Christmas, six to eight, excuse me, Christmas at the cabins over at Saunders Springs. And if Chief Henderson would like to give us an update on the truck, because that will be also going around this year, the Santa on the fire truck.
Thanks, Barbara.
So we are all in the Christmas spirit at the community center.
She forgot the craft fair this weekend.
What about the craft fair this weekend?
I said that first.
Not gonna take much time, so, so we, we are still working on the dates for it and as soon as we have the dates out for the Santa tour, we'll, we'll put them out on our Facebook page. But usually it starts the day after Thanksgiving, that, that weekend of Thanksgiving and from there it'll, it'll go till, till Christmas, so, but we are currently working, we got a truck down, so we're trying to figure out all that. So that's gonna be a little tricky, we may have to use a different truck, but we're trying to figure it out. So hopefully we, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it working, we'll make sure he's around town. You're doing the GPS thing again too, right? Yes, yes, uh huh. Yeah, and that link will be on the website and, and Facebook and all that good stuff. Good times. And we need elves. So do I need to do like you do with, with the beds and say?
I'm too tall.
Is that what it is?
Gotcha.
I don't qualify.
All right, man.
My phone. Okay, Radcliffe Small Business Alliance is hosting a community leadership meeting. The task is to set up a one-time meeting with a representative of as many local civic groups as we can. At this meeting, we will share all 2020 events with the objective of creating a community calendar and finding ways we can better support each other. So that will be this Thursday at six o'clock at eighteen-twelve North Dixie, which is T.W. Short's office. And then on Friday, come join us at noon, Jump Around Party Place is hosting a ribbon cutting. This is located at twenty-one oh six South Wilson Road, so that's Friday at noon, ribbon cutting.
What was that address again?
It's twenty-one oh six South Wilson Road. Jump Around Party Place, they do Inflatables, they do parties, private party type stuff.
Almost behind where the old Z Bart used to be, or the.
Oh, okay.
It's with the A-one roofing, or, not A-one, it's with the, oh, one of the roofing places, I can't remember. Quality, yeah, quality.
I'm gonna apologize for being absent next week, I'll be out of town.
Oh, well, we don't have to worry about the vote.
I've been Arizona, God steals Arizona, but I do support your appointments and I do wanna voice my support for the holiday schedule, so.
With or without the.
Right, right, right.
As it, as it was printed on the paper.
And I support my colleagues if you guys decide to go with that floating holiday thing. So I just wanted to make sure I voiced my support of those things due to my absence next week. Want to announce the twenty-fifth annual, twenty-five years we've been having a Thanksgiving, set-down Thanksgiving dinner at the church. We feed about a hundred and fifty folks every year. Love to have you guys, I know it's, it's not a political year, I love to have you guys out serving. And those photo ops, that mean nothing because you're just out serving and it's not a political year. The mayor's volunteered two turkeys and Ms. Baker's volunteered a donation.
I do.
So come out and have dinner with those in our community who come out every year because they don't wanna eat alone, or they just come out every year because it's great fellowship. So looking forward to Thanksgiving Day dinner with our community as usual. The time for me?
Time?
Eleven to two. We start serving at eleven and we end at two. You know, anybody that's shut in and need dinner, we do deliver. So we feed our first, first responders as well.
Did you say what it was at?
At the church, right there at the church on Thanksgiving Day.
Sign of the Dove Church.
The sign of the Dove Church, eleven eighty-nine Sunset Drive, Radcliffe, Kentucky.
There's my donation.
Oh, Barbara handed me money and this is not tied to any votes.
You're gonna vote for that holidays.
We are not voting on anything today and this has nothing to do.
You are voting for that holidays.
Any votes.
Interesting.
Please nobody else pass me money.
Miss Tanya Seep, this is Council.
So next week I will be out as well, I will be at the Women Legislators Conference in San Antonio. So I do give my support to the floating holiday and because we got new people on the board, I'll go ahead and go with that too. But I did reach out to the, Mayor Duval and I did have a conversation about me reaching out to a couple of different groups to try to solicit for more, I guess, more people to start applying for the board. So I did reach out to the GOP for the Young Republicans, there's also the Democratic Women's Club, trying to get a, a new pool of people to apply, grateful for the new ones that are coming on board, but we need to consistently look at progression, so it's always good to have fresh and not recycle. So I was very excited about that. So I got that going. December ninth, the Radcliffe Women's Club will be hosting the annual Taste of Radcliffe, six to eight, at the Calvin Community Center, please come out, ten dollars, sample all you can eat and have a good time, enjoy the holidays and along with everything else that Councilwoman Baker had mentioned that week, cause it seemed like it was a very busy week. So just remember that's also on the calendar as well. Councilwoman DeRoche mentioned about the community calendar, that is like a very crucial thing. A lot of times, the conversation is always in the community that people are not supportive of things, is a lot of times it's overlapping. So if you know of anybody that's a part of any organization, any church, any nonprofit, any whomever, you know, just try to go out there and find out what's, what's all going on and see how your event can be supported as well. We wanna support everybody, but we can't be everywhere. And let me see, whatever else I have there. December twenty-fifth, mark your calendar, the annual, the fourth annual Christmas dinner will be taking place at Calvin Community Center from one PM to four. All this, all are invited to come out and eat, whether you're eating by yourself or not, you're welcome to come by, we have a lot of great surprises that'll be taking place and just enjoy the community dinner, free, no cost to attend. We do not have transportation nor we, nor will we be doing drop-offs, but you're welcome to not spend any of the holidays alone, so that's all I have, thank you.
I just wanna know if I can go to San Antonio with her, warm, sunny San Antonio.
You better watch out, Kim, you better watch out.
I just wanna go somewhere warm.
It's only been cold a few days.
I don't have anything. After that comment, Kim, I don't know if I got. All right, I wanna real quick just thank our veterans, our veteran spouses, the, the children of veterans, and I think someone even said yesterday they wanna thank the pets of the veterans for all the, everything, everybody that's a veteran or has served, we appreciate you. We wanna thank our, we had a veteran ceremony, breakfast the other day. I wanna thank all the sponsors, our Parks and Rec Department for taking care of that back there. Our sponsors were Harden County NAACP, Ms. Williams, the DAV, the Veterans One Stop, the Radcliffe Women's Club, Colton Steakhouse, Optimus Club, former Councilman Stan Holmes, the Lions Club, the Democrat Women's Club, and of course, Calvin Community Center. So we appreciate our veterans and everything they do and we thank our sponsors for helping that on. Our next council meeting scheduled is Tuesday.